All right. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regular board meeting of the school district. School District Superior. Like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with official notification. Roll call, please.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Diane Smith.
Here.
I'm here. Snick Schumacher, maybe online? I would say excused. And President Steve Olson.
Here. This time with you all, please rise for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, pretty and justice for all. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted two, three minutes in length at this time. And is there any public comments?
No.
There are no public comments. Action taken at tonight's meeting will be final, proven unless otherwise noted. Second up on our agenda is disposition of minutes from November 6th, November 7th, and November 13th.
All right. Motion to accept the minutes.
That.
Motion in a second to accept the minutes from November 6th, November 7th, and November 13th of 2023. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the report of our superintendent. Action items. Administration recommends approval of one of the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five calendar options. Dash.
Oh. Let's take it last week and make a motion to approve the second calendar.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve option number two for the academic calendar of 2024-25. Any discussion?
So, yeah, I had questions. Um. Since the biggest contention from last year was that kids graduate and now we're going to have four days high school students in school without seniors there. And this can be unpopular question, but can we move graduation for the next Friday so that all kids are in school for those four days? Or does graduation have to be that particular Friday?
Uh, right now, it's in board policy that graduation is that Friday.
That weekend?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. I don't know. I'm gonna kind of look at Steve. Historically, it's been this way since I've been here and before I was here, uh.
Right. You really have to go back to seventies, eighties when, um, graduation was generally the Thursday. School, for some reason, through the calendars, always ended up on a Thursday. Generally, first Tuesday, excuse me, the last first Thursday in the month of June. And then in the mid-eighties and the all-night grad party started. Graduation was moved to Saturday nights. And then the party followed. There were a number of years. I'll give you exact years and stuff that students, eleventh, tenth, and ninth graders attended school generally after that graduation. This calendar is, it's number two with the four days. It's a little bit longer. There were some years that it might have been affected by extra snow days because we didn't have virtual days back then.
Well, and I will say the, the feedback from staff has really flipped since the pandemic. So when I used to push out calendars before, people would typically want to get out sooner in June. But now, in the last three years, people have wanted longer breaks, which means we get out later in June, which has caused more days without seniors. So the feedback from staff has really flipped, which is why the high school has felt it the last couple of years. Um, I will say one thing that that wouldn't necessarily be an option is we would never want to have graduation the same day as last day of school because of all of the preparation that has to happen with rehearsal and setup for the graduation ceremony itself. So that's why we've typically done it just before the last day of school. But having it on that leather, that last Friday isn't necessarily, would necessarily be a problem. But I think it's in board policy right now. I think you could just say, I think there might be some feelings out there if you change the graduation date, but.
I'm sure.
All right. I think, I think one of the.
Drew's looking at me.
I think being a senior, that's one of the things you look forward to, as well as being. You know, a few days earlier. Earlier than the rest. And yeah, that's kind of.
The interesting part of it is that the requirements, the, the seniors are required to meet state requirements. And that has to be proven, that has to be accepted by the principal, it has to be accepted by superintendent, sorry, at the, um, at the graduation itself, and really prior to that. Um, there's some, there has been concern over the years when seniors have graduated early and and the unfairness of them, senior teachers allegedly not having to do anything in the classrooms. I think, I think through Mr. Burgum's years and stuff, he was very careful to strut classes and stuff so that senior teachers may have had eleventh and twelfth graders in some classes. The AP classes are eleven and twelve, so I cannot give you an exact number of how many twelfth grade teachers have only twelfth grade classes, but.
Those teachers often help with graduation.
Yeah, they're.
Preparation duty.
Yeah, they're pretty involved in the rehearsal. Yeah.
They're helping with the rehearsal. I, I, I know they're also helping with graduation preparation. The last few years, I have definitely seen that.
I think of kids that also graduate at semester time. They don't need to be whatever it is, number of days that they're supposed to be in attendance. They've met the graduation requirements by the first, end of the first semester, whatever it is, and then they're counted fully.
I think, you know, I did meet with the department chairs. They said this is better than, this calendar feels better than the current one because they'll have four days instead of five days, you know, instead of a full week. So they did acknowledge that. And I think when I explained to them the scenario that impacts it, they understood a little bit better and they just, they understood also that if the majority of staff prefer to have those longer breaks, they know that we would probably lean towards approving that calendar anyway, so. Um.
I'm surprised that.
I was too.
People don't want to get us.
Oh. That two-week break was very appealing.
There's someone right here that probably wants to go to school soon. One option.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of second option choose twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is consideration of overnight field trip requested by Caitlin Moll through your high school, through your days in Madison, Wisconsin.
Motion approved.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Will prove the field trip for superior high school students to attend superior days in Madison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, he carries. Consideration of an overnight field trip requested by Pete Conley, Superior High School for Chicago, Illinois, from February 28th to March 3rd, 2024, for an AP Biology Evolution Field Trip.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept Pete Conley's field trip request. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items, informational items, first up because our Spartan showcase.
All right. Well, this is definitely the best part of my job. Um, this year, as you know, we've changed the format for Spartan Showcase. Every month, we've done something a little bit different at each school, kind of depending on the, the principal and the makeup of the morning. Um, of course, Mr. Harrelson goes big or goes home, right? So Mr. Harrelson did a full assembly for our Spartan Showcase winners at Great Lakes, and we have one of them here tonight. Hi, Molly. I didn't see you behind the podium earlier, so now I see you there. So, um, Molly is our Spartan Showcase Award winner, and I'll read a little bit of the nomination for her. Uh, it says Molly is an outstanding role model of work respect belong. She uses her free time before and during her recess to help kindergarten students have a successful day. She greets them at the doors in the morning and helps them with breakfast. She escorts kiddos to their classroom in the morning and assists them in the afternoon in their FIAID classes as well. She models kindness and respect always. And so, sounds like she's a born teacher. Yeah, I was gonna say that. Must run in the family. Yeah. So Molly Rubin, congratulations, and we're so glad you can come here tonight. Surprised? Were you surprised? Yeah. Was it intimidating to come up in front of everybody? A little bit. It was very fun. But thanks for coming tonight. Um, our other Spartan Showcase Award winner is Elaine Olson. And, um, she was also very surprised. She was so surprised she wasn't going to attend the assembly, and we had to go get her from upstairs to bring her down. She was working. Uh, Elaine is a warm face who greets her students every morning as they enter the building. She's out there all winter long, and even in the rain, she greets students with a kind welcome and is the best way to start the day. And she has a positive impact on everyone she encounters, and she chooses kindness in every interaction. She's always willing to step in and step up. So, um, that was very fun. She was very surprised, and it was fun to, to give that to her in front of her colleagues. So it's been fun to, to be able to do this in front of our, our students and staff at the buildings. I think it means a lot. So congratulations, styling too.
Yes.
She's amazing.
Yes.
You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or.
Don't have.
Glad you're here. Maybe you need to stop it there. Some ice cream on the way home. Yeah, some ice cream on the way home. Thanks for coming, you guys.
Coming.
Good job, Molly. Adam, you're up.
All right. Well, it's been a little bit since I've seen you guys last, but, um, outside of student council, there's been a couple of events going on at the high school. On last Friday, there was a school-wide assembly, and it was definitely ran a lot better than the previous one that we had. So they split us up into two groups, which helped a lot, which with managing kids and stuff. But it was called the Lionheart Experience. It was a group that performed. It was like a, a song kind of storytelling thing, and I, I liked it a lot. It was super, it was super cool. And it was just kind of talking to students about like self-worth and self-identity. And so, yeah, that was really neat to have them come in. And then.
They were in middle school too.
They were at the middle school too. So that was neat that they got to experience that too. And then they also did the performance after school. Yeah.
Yeah, they did an evening that.
Yeah. And then, um, so scholarship night, that was that was last Thursday, last Thursday, and I was there. There was a lot of, there was a large number of families in attendance, so I thought that was cool. And then they also brought in, um, someone from the DeLuce Superior Foundation to teach us about scholarships that aren't just SH, SH, SHS ones. So that was cool to be able to have that.
Regional ones?
Yeah, more regional scholarships. Um, our winter sports are in full swing, and along with that, there's been a sportsman, a sportsmanship leadership group. Wow, really struggling with my asses today at the high school that have been working with, um, Ms. Ella Olson, and we're creating Spartan Super Fan Cards, so it's just kind of encouraging students to go out to other Spartan events and like other events, like the theater performances and the dance and stuff. Just get other students involved that are not just at boys hockey, boys basketball. So that's kind of cool. And then there'll be prizes at the end of the, end of the winter season for our top people. Um, there was just a theater performance at SHS, and the teachers even got to have a little pre-performance, and they said it was super neat. I talked to a couple today, and they said it was a little different than most theater performances. You were in, in, onstage, and then the performance was in the audience. So that was kind of cool. I wasn't able to go, but seemed like it was a neat one. And then, um, in the spring, they'll be performing The Wizard of Oz, so that'll be coming up too. Um, and then within student council, this past week, we've been, well, prior to this, about two weeks ago, we went in school on a Saturday and decorated to the school. If you get a chance to go in there, it's all cute and all holiday cheering in there just to give students, you know, a little happiness around the holidays. And then we're also currently in our nine days of holiday cheer too, so we always do a little dress-up days and stuff before, before the holiday break. And then.
You get a good message out too.
You guys sure got that one. Um, and then something we've been working on that's kind of exciting. So for the past two years, we've been really wanting to have another dance, another school-wide dance that all students can attend. So, um, we want this to be a low-cost event, so.
And he's cheering back there.
Yeah, yeah. So this will be coming, we're calling it Snowball in January, January 19th date, and, um, it'll be $10 per person. So just enough to cover the DJ and the photo booth and all the other dance costs, but something for students to give, look forward to in the winter, you know.
Right at the high school, huh?
What?
Right at the high school.
Right at the high school. Yeah, right at the high school. And younger, younger classmen only get one opportunity for a high school dance each year, so then everyone will be able to get another opportunity. So have some fun. So, yeah, we're really excited about that. Yeah.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Recently committed, right? BSU?
Yeah.
Medjia State, so.
That's all I got tonight.
All right. Thank you, guys. Good reports.
Next up, uh, at the committee of the whole meeting on December 4th, Principal Ryan Haroldson of Great Lakes shared updates from his school. And it was very thorough. Ryan just very committed his work.
He sure is.
TV next up, uh, next up, the next agenda item is the board committee reports. Uh, we did meet on last Monday, the 4th. Action taken at the committee of the whole meeting is to force recommendations for final consideration at tonight's school board meeting, unless otherwise noted on the committee of the whole agenda. First up was the Teaching and Learning Committee. Action item, Administration recommends the addition of new courses at Superior High School beginning in 2024 to 25.
Motion to accept. Second.
Here's the motion in a second to accept the Administration's recommendation of the new courses. Any discussion?
Thank you, Crystal, for getting that information to us.
First, the one question I had was, I kept reading one of them, the, um, fundamentals of grammar and style. And, and in the explanation, I thought it was pretty important when Kara pointed out that scores in the ACT have generally been lower. So timeliness of the courses, is, is there a recommendation to take it first semester? Is it 11th graders only?
Um. I don't think that they, as they did like, uh, they wanted to do, uh, like a grade requirement, except, you know, beyond, of course, ninth grade is, you know, just their ELA language arts course. You need to have that, of course, as the base.
Right.
For them, 10 through 12. Um. I guess, I don't know that they talked a lot about that. At the same time, this, you know, we wanted to beat this up for a core area. The whole department has been doing a scope and sequence analysis of gaps based on the ACT and all the standards. Um, Andy Wolf, now that he's moved into an instructional coach position, has been helping lead some of that work, so that's, that gap on the ACT is kind of giving, getting covered department-wide also.
In other courses. Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Good question, though. Um, I don't think they said specifically you need to be 10th or 11th to get it before the ACT. They're going to be getting some of that gap filler in other courses too.
Okay.
Does that help? Does that make?
That does. Yep.
Good question.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Oh, there's Nick.
Why, Nick? I don't know where.
I'm slow, but I figured it out. The next act tonight, I'm Administration recommends the following course name changes at Superior High School beginning in the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
Second. Hmm. Accept the following course name changes at Superior High School, and then you can see it's part spin. One whole lines up. Is there any further discussion on this action item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. There were no discussion items, informational items at the committee of the whole meeting. Kate Test, Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment, gave an update on the 2223 Student Achievement Data and DPI Report Cards, and she also provided information on the new Act 20 will be required during the 2425 school year, the reading program. Carrie Saunders, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, invited us with information on the DPI Five-Year School Self-Evaluation Summary, and then her department update. Is there a motion to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Next in the second to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item, the Budget and Insurance Committee. Action item, Gifts, Grants, Bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in November of 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept gifts, grants, and requests received in November of 2023. Is there any further discussion? You very much. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items, informational items, update on a staff meeting. And then the Fund Tam Revenue and Expenditure Preliminary Report. Anything to add, David, since last week? Oh, we're spending the money we had last week. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. But that's informational items, so we really need that. Get with the program, Mr. Olson. You're a little tight with the, uh, festive spirit. Policies and Rules Committee, action items. Administration proposed motion to accept the insurance committee report.
You're getting ahead of yourself, though.
Yeah.
I'll make. A second.
Motion to accept the budget, and a second to accept the budget. His committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Policy and Rules Committee, action items. Administration proposed approval of changes to the following policies based on the older recommendations in order to keep in compliance with state and our federal law updates. First up in the second reading of policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program Inter-District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to accept second reading of policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program Inter-District. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of policy 5200, Attendance.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept second reading of policy 5200, attendance. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Second reading of new policy 5461, Children at Risk of Not Graduating from High School.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept new policy 5461, Children at Risk of Not Graduating from High School. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of new policy 6108, Authorization to Make Electronic Fund Transfers.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Action in a second to accept policy 6108, Authorization to Make Electronic Fund Transfer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of new policy 6114, Cost Principles, Spending Federal Funds.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in a second to accept new policy 6114, Cost Principles, Spending Federal Funds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of new policy 6152.02, waiver of school fees or fines.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept new policy 6152.02, waiver of school fees or fines. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading, policy 7100, Facilities Planning.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept policy 7100, Facilities Planning. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Finally, the second reading of policy 8310, Public Records.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept policy 8310, Public Records. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items. There was one informational items. Administrative Guidelines 52 will be revised in accordance with policy 52 updates, which we approved up above. Douglas County Pruency Committee convened on November 1st, 2023, per Wisconsin State Statute 118.162, who came together for discussion and collaboration. These were their findings and recommendations. Comprehensive list.
Can I make a motion to accept the Policy and Rules Committee report?
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Policy and Rule Committee report. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Legislative Committee, action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items, Capitol One, Senate, and somebody took floor action on several K-12 education-focused bills. Wisconsin Legislature took action this week on a number of bills focused on K-12 education. The Senate yesterday voted to approve SB 241 relating to a school psychologist loan program. The bill now will move to the Assembly, where the Assembly Education Committee already voted to recommend their version of the bill or passage. In the other chamber, the Assembly voted to pass several more K-12-focused bills, including AB 223 relating to maintaining opioid antagonistic in schools, and AB 575 relating to a DPI mental health training program. Senate has not taken any previous action on either of these bills. However, according to Senate rules, committee does not need to approve a bill for the full chamber to consider it. for the full chamber to consider it. In addition to their individual action, both the Senate and Assembly voted to pass SB 267 relating to a recovery high school grant program. The bill now moves to the governor's desk for his signatures. To read more information on any of the bills. Is there a motion to accept the Legislative Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in the second to accept the legislative committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Operations Committee, action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items. Pat Gillen, Director of Transportation, gave us a weather report when we walked outside and it was raining.
I blame him. I blame.
Put that in his file.
Yeah.
But he provided a department update at the committee, the whole meeting on December 4th. Is there a motion to accept the Operations Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
To accept the Operations Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel Negotiations Committee, one action item. Administration recommends approval of the December 2023 new hires and separations report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in the second to accept. Approve the new hires and separations report for December 2023. Is there any further discussion? Couple ads there that are red since our last meeting. Like to congratulate Mary Anderson Petrowski and Steve Fregue. They've been with our district very long. Have been just wonderful contributors in many, many different polls. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items and no informational items. Is there a motion to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in the second to accept the Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other reports by any of the board members?
Well, I, I think Autumn took mine, but just wanted to kind of talk about the play that was put on. I've heard lots of great reviews from it. I wasn't able to attend myself, but then wanted to also again spotlight the Lionheart experience. I did get to go to the community event on Friday night and it was amazing. The Douglas County Health and Human Services is the one who put it on and sponsored it. But after talking with them, I know they went to several schools in our area as well. They have other things that they, other shows that they can put on and, and some curriculum it sounded like as well. So I thought it was really well done and something that's really worth looking into more for our students and that.
Heard a lot of positives.
Really good. Really.
Yeah.
And it seemed to engage the kids, really, the middle school and the high school. It was, it was just really good, so.
I'd just like to mention that nomination papers are available to our community for our school board. We do have three openings this spring.
I do think it's important just to note that a board office will have limited hours over the Christmas break, so people are interested in picking up those papers. They should do that sooner than later.
They can go online and get them, too.
Yeah.
Just to go on program highlights. Anything else to report?
Um, just, we've got a lot of holiday concerts coming up at the elementary level. I'm going to try to see as many of those as I can in the next week or so. Winter sports are in full spring, swing, so it's a busy time of year.
Anything else? Finally, consideration of bills and pre-approved bills. Motion to accept.
Motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion in the second to consider bills and reapproved bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favorites signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in the second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
My apologies. I thought I heard Nick say no. Good thing I can't vote. I never go out.
Go voting on something.
We've got three this one tomorrow.